Got it.
To enjoy the evening.
Yeah.
I don't believe it.
Me.
Oh, that's good. How are you doing?
Okay, I've got it. It's ready to go.
How many people?
I've heard a lot of things in my life, Frank, and I've never heard that.
It's one of my favorites.
He's one of my favorite things. Yes, I love, I like all this. I need all that. Beneath this.
May they be sharing. Did they release her?
I don't think. Maybe it was a test mom. And home.
All right, Mayor. Six o'clock. Is this ready? Is this ready? Let's all for a minute. I don't have them signed.
She's got, she's bringing it.
Okay.
Jim. It just. John, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, thanks.
I understand the mayor. His tails, he got tails.
Not yet. Let's see if he's answered me. He's not, he's not on yet. Oh, he is right now. Hi, Chaz, can you hear us?
I can barely, I don't, I don't have a lot of, I don't have good service down here, so I don't know if it's me or you guys.
We think it's you.
Can you see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
I can hear you.
Oh, I'm the only one that can see it.
Oh, that's fine, that's probably good.
There you are.
There he is.
Call this public meeting to order six o'clock, April 25th, with the city of Oak Hill. And before we begin, is there someone who wants to offer a prayer, I understand?
Your word. Be with us, I, the city, the state, and make the correct decision. Whatever it is, be better than those. Be with each everyone, actually. Wake each one up in its city.
Amen.
We're gonna do the play. The clerk will call the roll. What did you was on here? We'll do that too then.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the bottom, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will call the roll.
Mayor Daniel Wright.
Here.
Councilor-at-Large Tom Oxley.
Here.
Ward one council members Diana Janey.
Here.
Krista Hodges.
Here.
David Thery.
Here.
Ward two council members Charles Smallwood Jr.
Yeah.
Steve Hazlett.
Here.
Benitez Jackson. He's gone off.
He was on virtual.
He's gonna get back on, let's see.
Beneath this.
John's still on there?
John's on, yes. But not Chaz. Yes.
Go calling.
One county's hard to like under six.
Yeah.
Chad asking if you want us to call.
Let's try to call him, just see if you can call him in. Please. And thank you.
He must have no service.
I'd say. He may come when you call back.
Yeah, I'll look for him.
All right. Brings us to public comments for this public meeting. John Garvin. If it up to council, I'd say keep it at three, it's up to you all if you want to change it. If I understand the ordinance, it's the deceased and the mayor. All right, I keep it at three. Well, I'm glad you understood it.
Anyway, I'm John Garvin, I'm here again, and first thing I wanted to mention was that the, some of the counselors had been saying that they were concerned, they'd been getting a lot of people saying, oh, something funny's going on, or maybe, you know, there's some kind of impropriety, and that's, that tends to be what the on the street now, if you talk to anybody, that's what they're thinking, because this whole process has been so, you know, closed and not really open. So, to the counselors who are getting comments from the public that maybe something crooked's going on, I see, so keep the cards and letters coming. Okay, now I have a quote here from Ronald Reagan, which is, when you can't make them see the light, make them feel the heat. And the second one I have is from that good old American writer, Mark Twain, who said, "The truth has no defense against a fool determined to believe a lie." So I think it could be and/or fools, or, and/or lies, in this whole process. And my eyes finally got opened, because I made a call to a prominent person in town, city official. I wanted to get an idea of what's really going on here, you know, just kind of fill me in, you know, kind of late to the party, want to know what's going on. And I was told it's a democracy. The votes are four to three. It's a done deal. Like I was talking to a hillbilly, Al Capone, or John Gotti, or something, like a mobster talking. And I was told this twice. Okay, so I didn't want to end up in the trunk of a '61 Cadillac, Dan and Canards, I didn't follow that line of questions. And then, so I said, well, who's really behind this? And I was told that there was a certain person that was a driving force. This, you know, this had to be done, and then I realized what's going on here.
That's me, I'm sorry, I'm just trying.
Are we good?
To get this to work.
Mayor, stop the clock. Stop the clock, mayor.
Mr. Garvin, you'll get your time.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
And then I, and so, there was a driving force, so then I realized, you know, Tom, this is great, you putting out all these facts, and all this information, and dealing with logic and common sense, it's got nothing to do with this whole process. This whole process comes down to one thing. They're not concerned where this building is adequate. I was taken on a tour of Tuesday, these are wonderful facilities, wonderful. People are wonderful, you know, of course, you can't be asked whether you like it or not, because, oh, that would influence the whole process, but there's something that they want to do. The need is not important. The arguments are not important. You could have a hundred people come in here and give the three minutes, it ain't gonna make any difference. There's a want that they want, and they want that building. And they've got the votes, so it's mainly political power. That's why all their arguments have been so flimsy. Look at any of these arguments that these counselors have made or for, they're flimsy. No-brainer, we got enough money, the mayor doesn't have an office, we pay $675 to see more next year. We pay $675, that's the best that we could do, they went down to $550, but back to $675. So that's what you all need to realize. It doesn't make any difference what you do, they got the votes, it's a done deal. It's like a mob family running this show now. Whoever thought that we'd get to a point in this town where they would put a shot clock up like this? That's an insult to the town, that's an insult to the people of the town. I said my piece.
Chris Gill.
Good evening, council, my name is Chris Gill, most of you know I live over in Ward Two, and as a concerned citizen about the direction of this city and the division and the animosity that's within the leadership, I want to leave you with just a few comments. I want to first start by saying whether you're a person of faith, as I am, or it maybe you may not be, that's your choice, but the Bible says, and says every kingdom divided against itself is brought to desolation, and every city or house divided against itself shall not stand. From what I see, and many other people, I want to caution this city council that appears to be that there's some cracks in the foundation, and if it's not corrected, the city's going to destroy itself from within. As a lifelong resident of Oak Hill, one who serves this community and is very active in this community and cares much for it, it leaves me deeply concerned for the direction it's headed. Not only for myself, but for my children and my grandchildren that are here. As far as the vote for the purchase on the bank building, whether you are for it or whether you are against it, let me remind you that this vote should not be solely based on personal reasons, peer pressures, disagreements, or political parties. It should be done in what's in the best interest of the citizens of Oak Hill as a whole. I want to remind you that you are representatives, or voices of the general public of your respective wards. You're supposed to be voting in the manner of the citizens that your ward would like. If you're not aware of what the majority of the citizens in that ward want, not just the ones that are on your side, but the majority of them, then maybe you should have reached out to them along with those that work here in this building, and made a way to hear everyone's opinions, so that you could represent those voices in the correct manner in which you were elected and trusted to do. And everyone here has had ample time to do that. So I respectfully ask each one of you, before you cast your final vote, to self-examine yourself and ask, am I voting in the way the citizens of my ward would want their tax dollars spent? Or am I voting for other reasons other than what my ward desires? I want to recall your memory to a commercial on TV just a couple years ago, it was put out by Nike in 2018. And everyone, when that came out, everyone celebrated it, and they, and, and they backed it, and it simply said, believe in something, if even if it means sacrificing everything. Often being in leadership roles can be lonely at the top, some of the decisions you make may not be what some people want, but all decisions have lasting consequences. Some are good, and some are bad. Some of the decisions you will make, including this one today, may not be popular with some people, even with your constituents across the aisle. So I encourage you tonight, council, to do what is right, and vote in the best interest of the citizens who elected you to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ailshar.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, I had the privilege of calling McKinley Architects up in Willing the other day, and then speaking with the gentleman in Charleston, and talking, asking, you know, you sent this letter out, no one signed the letter, no date on the letter, you didn't use your letterhead on it, why did you do that? And the reason, he said, he said we understand that there was a little problem with people feeding, but getting feedback on it, so we decided just to drop it at that right now. And so I went over some of the things, and he says it costs $700,000 to renovate, not counting the major systems, and I said, what is a major system you're referring to? There again, he just replied that, he said, sometimes, Mr. Ailshar, these older buildings are better just to build a new one, be feasible just to build a new one and do away with the old. We know that's not going to happen, and another thing, I was watching, last couple weeks ago, I was watching the town, the meeting, council meeting, and the gentleman was trying to get the TV for the city of Oak Hill free of charge, and one of the council members says, you know, there's, I'd rather, I want to vote no on it, I want to put it on the table, let it go for right now, because there's not enough information. You've got to be kidding me. We still haven't had enough information how this deal all came about with the building, BB and T building. We still haven't had enough information of what it's going to cost to renovate the digon thing, but still, yet, we want to vote and pass, we want to go ahead and go for it. If you don't have enough information for one substance, and you don't surely have enough for this one, why would you vote for it? Why would you want to put the city in this kind of financial situation? How many of you going to be here and run for reelection the next time? How many council members have been appointed or satisfied with everything and say, well, I want to run for this next year? Or you're going to just drop out and cast this vote for the city just for your own self? It's not about an inner circle. It's not about a, you know, legacy or anything, but it's about the city of Oak Hill. You know, it's, it's not about, there's no I and team. And if there is, the team won't succeed. And I just, I just encourage you, the council members, really look at this. Don't do it because you may be friends with this person or that person, what's, what's, what's good for your own heart? What, what do you, how do you really feel about paying $675,000? A whole lot more above than what it's crazy to be. I mean, really, how, what kind of, it's like I said, buy a vehicle. It needs a transmission, needs an engine, all this other stuff, but you still pay $2,000 more for the vehicle than what it's worth. I don't understand it, council people, and I'd appreciate if you'd really take it to heart and think about it, and not let it be a done deal. Not let it be a done deal, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson.
Good evening, council, I guess you guys already know how I feel, I'm not going to take three minutes of your time, I think this is a very irresponsible way to spend the taxpayers' money, as we've talked about multiple times. I think we need to put the needs of the city above the wants of the council, and I think this is a want, not a need. I was raised in a generation where you got shoes first, and then you got the clothes you wanted. We need to work on the shoes, we need to work on the ground and build up, we need drainage, we need sidewalks, we need basics, and then we can have the pretty things in life that maybe somebody wants. This is not the way to get, get this building, is not going to bring tourists come. Nobody comes to see City Hall, I go to Myrtle Beach almost every year, I have yet to go and find their City Hall. I have yet to go find any City Hall in any city I've been to, I went to Destin for the first time this year, beautiful town, beautiful place, never once did it cross my mind to go see City Hall. Never, not once. We have a beautiful courthouse in Fayette County, do you think anybody drives just to go see the courthouse? Maybe half a percent of people are actually driving around looking at warehouses. That's not their destination, their destination is to go and do, we need businesses here, we need to draw businesses here, we need to use this money for other things than a pretty building. This costing us a fortune, and it's a money pit. We're going to put so much money into it, and then so much more money into it, and this bond does not cover everything. If you read the bond, it says a portion of, that, that means once we buy it, and it's financed, we're stuck with it. And there is no bank that you could go to right now and say, I want to buy this building for $675,000, and they say, sure, what's the price for? And you tell them the appraisal price, they're going to laugh you out. This is not a good idea. I have talked to so many people, and I have been very honest with them and told them, do your research, read the appraisal, it's all there in black and white. I don't understand how council can go forward, knowing that the citizens do not stand behind it. I have yet to meet a person that is 100% let's do this, and I think this is the best idea ever, except for the few members on council. The citizens are worried, they are lacking confidence in council because of this. And I urge you guys to reconsider and make the best decision for the entire town. Thank you.
Christopher Basalmo.
Hello, everybody. I'm Christopher Basalmo. I've lived in Oak Hill ever since I was a grade. I've been a homeowner for, oh, sorry. I've been a homeowner for four years in Oak Hill. My first question, how does this help the average Oak Hill citizen? Since I've been a homeowner, I've had no reason to ever go to see city council for myself. And for anything, basically, like a few years ago, I needed a burn permit. That's saying I went for the, to the Oak Hill City Police. So that's my question. There's nothing really benefiting the regular citizen. And then like the report I've seen, the bond will cover up to one point five million and then anything after then taxpayers will have to involve. With the cost of like inflation and everything, how can the average taxpayer pay for this right now? We are broke. Prices, milk, eggs, regular stuff keeps going up. And if we have to pay anything else, then it's just going to continue to hurt us and, you know. Another thing is, what does Oak Hill have that draws people in? Because the thing is, for a city vibe, you need citizens. What's something you could tell me that Oak Hill has that other cities don't? You know, that's saying, I think that I'd rather invest money in ideas, something that could draw, because like I'm hearing one thing Fable is going to do is have like a splash park, some like a little splash pad for the kids at the park, something like that would be a better investment. Things like entertainment, this stuff to draw people in here, because Oak Hill, in my opinion, is like a slowly, it feels like we're slowly dying. I don't see as many, I don't see anybody I talk to excited about Oak Hill as a city of the future. And that's what's worrying me, because as people move up, it makes the cost of living go up. And then, so we're already strapped, so it's going to continue to cause things like that. And then, that's, and then like the business side, what's there to draw businesses like? Because the idea to pay for it is lease spacing for the bond, like to pay for. Why would a business want to come in and lease out space? What's there in Oak Hill to draw customers? Because recently, we had a new business open up and it's already closed. Danny's Place right near the Little Caesar's. It's already closed and they was open maybe half a year. And that's the thing. I'm hearing rumors that the rent is really expensive in Oak Hill. That's something else that I'd rather see the money go to, maybe lowering the rent so businesses can come in. And then taxes, because you know, a lot of businesses, how much am I going to pay just to open a business in your town? So that's the thing. And I, I think that's all I'll say.
Thank you. Mr. Ayers. Mr. Ayers.
How you doing?
She's working on it.
Okay. Just a few things. I was at the building commission meeting the other night. It's, it amazes me how the two members they put on that commission, they already knew were for the bank buildings. They don't know what the parameters are. Rhonda couldn't tell them. Everything needed to be known. They had a lot of questions, yet they still voted to pass it. Let's start the process. I mean, we, we got to think. Why, why are we spending this money? This building is fine. This city council room is fine. I talked to Tom Miller today. There's no rush to buy that building. We don't know what the final cost is. We don't know what it's going to actually cost us in the long run. The building commission asked, can we get appraisal on what is, a price on what it's going to cost us? They didn't have the answers to it. We're putting these meetings, they moved the meeting up to Saturday now for the building commission. I mean, it's like we're rushing to get this done. That bank will still be there. I, I didn't think the one percent would add up too much. As a business owner, I realized that one percent does add up real quick. So the money is not the question. The question is, do we need to waste it? Do we need to rush? Can we stop and wait? Everybody that spoke here tonight spoke against it. I didn't hear one person get up here and say, hey, let's go buy it. Yet it wasn't a lot of people here. But I mean, when everybody's against it, what little bit of public did come? Maybe if we had that TV station up and running, you would have had this place packed. But a lot of people still don't know about it. I mean, and I, I know you've got the votes. And I know it's going to go through, but I think if any one of you four that are voting for it can stop and think for a minute, let's not rush this. We can start the process over. We can, maybe renegotiate. And I don't blame the Millers. They're in business to make money and Teddy Gray. But they're, they're getting threats over this. Well, it's not their fault. I'm a business person. If you want to pay me more for something than what I want for it, I'm going to take the money too. But I, I just think city council, the four members, I know I can't address you individually. One of y'all need to stop and think real hard before you cast your final vote. I mean, yeah, election is coming up, but this will be done and we've got to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor. Sir, you've already signed up. Your time has expired. Sorry. All right, brings us to unfinished business. Consideration of an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of and the design, construction, and equipping of additions, betterments, and improvements to certain real estate located one-on-one Main Street East, Oak Hill, West Virginia, the issuance by the Oak Hill Building Commission of lease revenue bonds, series two oh two-two, to finance the above-described purchase and design, acquisition, construction, and equipping of the real property and the cost of issuance thereof, and the leasing of the real property by the city from the building commission to serve as a city hall. This is the third reading and the final reading of this particular ordinance.
Mayor, I move consideration of the ordinance authority through acquisition of and the design, construction, and equipping of additions, betterments, and improvements to certain real estate located at one-on-one Main Street East, Oak Hill, West Virginia, issuance by the Oak Hill Building Commission of lease revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-two, to finance the above-described purchase and design acquisition, construction, and equipping of the real property and the cost of issuance thereof, and the leasing of the real property by the city from the building commission to serve as a city hall. Third reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second, mayor.
Probably moving second. Any discussion?
I do, mayor. First and foremost, Michelle Razer, who could not be here this evening, asked me to present this petition that she has two hundred and fifty-four signatures of, and I'll make sure Dmitya gets that, of people who oppose this. And I, like so many other people, work hard for every dollar I have. There's, it would be different if we could justify the need for this, but we have the space. There's no clear plan, no clear cost. It is frivolous of us to spend tax dollar money this way. I wouldn't do it. I don't think anybody on council would do it with their own money. And it makes no sense to me why it's okay for us to do it with public funds. I did owe those remarks.
Any other comments? More discussion before we vote?
One thing, I'm not going to belabor you with things that have gone over in the past several meetings. I appreciate those that came and spoke. You brought out some things that I hadn't even considered, so I appreciate that. I appreciate everybody being in. And like Mr. Gill said, whether you're for or against it, you know, be civil, let's move forward. But going back to some things, we, they pointed out, there was never a need determined, never a need for new facilities. No one surveyed the staff, but I understand it was stated that they don't matter, even though they spend two thousand hours a year in this facility. Then we had the appraisal. We had an undated, unsigned assessment by McKinley. And I thank Mr. Ailshar, because I hadn't talked to anybody at McKinley. I didn't even feel right to reach to them. Appreciate your comment. And we had the Southern West Virginia inspection for mold. Now, it's funny that both the appraisal and Mr. McKinley's folks pointed out there was mold. But according to the three hundred dollar payment to West Virginia inspection, there was none. So then we had the special meeting on four twenty-six twenty-two. And Councilor Perry delivered that time the undated, unsigned assessment by McKinley. Stated the cost, and the estimated cost was six hundred and seventy-five thousand. It was voted on that particular time, even though they had not had a single meeting of the building commission. So we're still doing that. We're going rooting for the third ordinance reading, even though the building commission has not had a second meeting. Then someone else pointed out the portion of the cost. That's correct, the one point five million. There's no guarantee that the bond is going to pay that much. And in that bond, I'm not even sure, and Mr. Stump can speak to that, whether that accounts for the closing costs. And lastly, you know, again, we've not followed procedures. I, I appreciate Mr. Stump being on board because he's a very knowledgeable, competent, and experienced attorney, particularly dealing with bond issues. We have not followed procedures, and so we're going out of line again. And I, I guess there was an urgency, building commission meeting on Saturday. I don't know. Maybe that was because that's the only time they could all be present. But I urge you to reconsider, think about it carefully. And there are so many needs in this community, some of them recreation, some of the things that may draw other people to it. But I agree with Ms. Robinson. I don't know anybody that's going to come here to look at our city hall. I talked to the mayor of Fredville, and they're doing well. She'll tell you, no one comes to see their town hall. So I thank you for your time. Please vote carefully.
Any more discussion?
Mayor, some questions of council. Mr. Stump, are you there? He was. Yes. I have one question. In your legal opinion, have we followed procedure code and statute up to this point?
I'm not aware of any state statute that hasn't been followed.
The other question I would have is this. We received a memo, all of us today, I think, or yesterday, from the city manager, which indicated that it was suggested that we employ a architect engineer. My question is this. Before we vote, is it required that we hire an architect engineer? And would that preempt tonight's meeting?
I apologize, councilman. My, I heard you received a memo from the city manager, and then I got kicked off the internet and I just got let back on. So I'm sorry. I didn't hear the entire question.
That we received a memo from the city manager and I respect and again credit her and acknowledge her prudency with what she's attempting to do, which is one hundred percent right, Dmitya. That we could or should or could hire an architect engineer. And I think, and my question is, is it required that we do that prior to moving ahead?
No, it's not required. You, you can pass this ordinance tonight and you're not required to have an, there's no state law that says you must have an architect or engineer on board. Now, before you do any improvements over and above twenty-five thousand dollars, that would, you would need to have, in most instances, a design professional on board to be able to bid the project. But with respect to this ordinance, no, there's no requirement that you have an architect or engineer retained under five G.
Thank you, Mr. Stump. I have, would like to read into the record and have it entered into the record, email that I received today from David Sibray. I think most of us know David. He is a commercial real estate agent, and he has the Bessie's building. And he has voluntary agreed to look at, consider the building and within his ethics. He furnished me with this to read tonight. "Thank you again for inviting me to visit the former bank building. While I cannot assess the value set by the sellers and their agents to a marked degree, I can offer an assessment of other measures as regards investment in this important structure. Here are three points I can provide as a professional working with landmark properties. The building is a civic structure of the highest order, suitable in style and function to house an institution as publicly important as a bank or government office. It is designed for such a purpose, and any repurposing can be achieved swiftly and at little expense. Its design is functionally and aesthetically matched to the purpose. Number two, the building provides modern public accommodation that the current city hall cannot reasonably achieve. Its large, open lobby and high visibility invite participation in municipal governance. Its accessibility and parking availability accommodate citizens who require wheelchair access and those whose mobility is otherwise compromised. Prominent on Main Street, at the heart of the city, the building sets the stage for the community's growth and establishes Oak Hill as the largest municipality in the region and one of the largest in the state. Concerning the economy of the city's downtown occupancy by most public government offices would be of great benefit. In my professional opinion, this is an ideal opportunity for the city to invest in a building that will benefit the public for many years." David Sibray, Foxfire Realty, three oh four five seven five seven three nine. And I will turn this over to the clerk to place as it is given in the minutes. I'd also heard Ronald Reagan referred to just a few minutes ago, and I respect Ronald Reagan highly. And think he was a great president. Unfortunately, we're not of the same persuasion, but I have a statement I'd like to read by Theodore Roosevelt. "The man in the arena, it is not the critic that counts. Not the man who points out how the strong may stump, man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives violently, who errs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasm, the great devotion, who spends himself in a wordy cause, who at the best, who at the best, knows the end, the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly. So his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither show victory or defeat." And I would ask also, just be in the minutes, and I'll make it about. Other than that, I have no other comment.
So there are no other comments in council? The question here is Mr. Jackson. Is he going to be able to vote by phone or by Zoom or what, before we call, have the roll called?
I can try again to get in touch with him. He's not on, I guess he keeps losing connection there. So I do not think he can vote.
So I don't think Mr. Jackson can vote tonight.
Pardon?
I said I don't think Mr. Jackson can vote tonight.
Mayor, with that attempt, I would move the previous question.
All right, the question. All right, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor, Tom Oxley.
Calling the roll? Or you want a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Which?
Your vote.
No.
Diana Janey?
No.
Krista Hodges?
No.
David Perry?
Yes.
Charles Smallwood Junior?
Yes.
Steve Haslip?
Yes.
And I think this is absent. So three to three, sir. And I think this is, I have some, so three to three, sir.
Three to three. Which now moves it to the city charter, which allows the mayor to vote in case of a tie, which is three and three. I'm going to exercise that right. The mayor votes in the affirmative. The motions agree to four to three. And with that, the meeting's adjourned.